Please rise for the invocation led by Dr. Trampy, followed by the pledge led by Mr. McLaughlin.
Father, as we get together to discuss our community and our policies, we ask you for wisdom, we ask you for patience, and we ask you to remind us of your great lesson to treat others as we would have them treat us.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and consider it holy for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Taylor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members. This evening is your scheduled joint work session on the FY18 budget with the school board. However, we have one item that is in the bullpen for addition to the agenda, if you would, and that is the bringing back the previously tabled vote on SUP 16-008. This is the Antioch Salem Fields Assisted Living Facility in the Chancellor District. And that would be a motion and vote first to add that to the agenda, please?
Motion to add to the agenda.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll call the question.
Very good, and the item is before you for a vote.
Thank you, sir, and appreciate the opportunity to speak on this item one last time. At the February 28th meeting, we had three residents which spoke, continuing to have concerns about this case. The board continued it until tonight. Immediately after that item was heard, staff, as well as the applicant and their engineer and these three residents met outside to discuss their concerns and come up with a solution. Those solutions are contained within the landscape buffer exhibit which you have in your packet tonight. Staff is recommending approval of SUP 16-8 with the conditions in the approval resolution, also within your packet, and one additional condition. That, in summary, those three conditions would be that the facility shall be built in conformance with the GDP prepared by Bowler Engineering dated September 15th and last revised December 5th, 2016. Condition two, that the GDP's landscaping plan shall be supplemented as depicted on the landscape buffer exhibit dated March 1st, 2017, including the six-foot-tall chain-link fence. And condition three, that the southern planting area shall include a minimum of 65 leather-leaf viburnum shrubs, 28 Colorado spruces, and 18 eastern white pine evergreens, which is in excess of the current numbers listed on the landscape buffer exhibit dated March 1st, 2017. If there's any questions, I'll stand by for them.
Mr. Chair. I'd like to motion to approve with the staff's recommendation with the three conditions as stated.
Any discussion? Call the question.
Six yes, with Mr. Benton voting no.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that puts us to public presentations. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, sir.
Run through the guidelines for public presentations briefly. Public presentations are an opportunity for citizens to present matters that you believe deserve the board's attention. These presentations are not part of a public hearing. Sign up to speak at each public hearing is separate. Public presentations are one-way comments from citizens to the Board of Supervisors. This is not a forum for dialogue or debate. To make a public presentation, please sign up on the provided sign-up sheet, and please print clearly. Come to lectern when your name is called. Clearly state your name, address, and voting district for the record. Address your comments directly to the board. State whether you're speaking on your own behalf, in which case you'll have three minutes to speak, or on behalf of a group, in which case you'll have five minutes to speak. The green light is on when it is time for you to speak. The yellow light is on when you have 30 seconds to sum up, and when the red light comes on, your microphone will go off. Public presentations shall not be used to address public matters subject to public hearings or to make political campaign speeches, private advertisements, or personal attacks. Written comments are always welcomed by the Board of Supervisors. Amy, who is the first speaker?
The first speaker is Gil So, followed by Dawn Napper.
Good evening, I'm Gil So, 3140 Summit Crossing Road, Berkeley District, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm here tonight because I'm disappointed. I've read through the county administrator's budget, and I've looked through the school board's budget, and again, terribly disappointed would be an understatement. In looking through this, I found a number of issues embedded that need to be resolved before you move to stage three in your budget process. Factually, if you look through this and you look at page 21 as a beginning, in that you find that the general fund has increased by 4.8 percent. You look for what's being allocated to the schools, you find $286,320. .0025, a quarter, less than a quarter really when you do math, in terms of an increase for our schools. That is not what should be there, and I think after you'll read through it and consider some of the facts here. What you have seen in this, and I know the word tax increases, we've gone through that before. Our children are not to be blamed when there's a need for funding to ensure they get a quality education. They get one time through this, and it's important that as the authorizing tax authority that you look at that in that fine detail, because again, it isn't right and it's disappointing. Case in point, you look through this, you had an increase of 6.5 percent in reserves. You have a requirement of fiscal guidance of 11 percent. Your actual reserve is over 15 percent, $60 million, and one of those reserves grew 52 percent. Yet schools that need to be viewed as an investment, not an expense, get what? Less than a quarter of 1 percent. It's embarrassing, and something can be done about, and it doesn't require a tax increase. Take a look at the detail. Case in point, you have a study being done for staffing, I think it's the Evergreen Company. There is a reserve already for that, $1.4 million, two-and-a-half percent compensation package. You haven't had that approved yet. That money is already taken and assigned. You get down to the assignment levels which you have in your reserve. There's one sitting at the bottom of it says 1.4 percent of million dollars for yet to be determined for commitment. So the disappointment is the fact that, one, already as we start this journey, money has been moved aside, whether it's the 3.6 that was taken, and again, that was expiring, understand that, but the fact is, we need to do what's right for our kid.
Sir, I'm sorry, your time has expired.
Dawn Napper, followed by Teri Dusmaris.
Good evening, gentlemen. I would like to give you several reasons why you should fully fund our public schools. The first reason is our children. They are the reason every employee of Spotsylvania County Schools gets up each and every morning, from the bus drivers who pick up our kids, the cafeteria workers who feed them, the custodians who keep the schools clean, to the principals, paraeducators, and teachers. We all are there for the children. They are our number-one priority. Despite what some people think, we are not there for the money. Several employees cannot pay their bills on what they make without working two or three jobs. We are having trouble attracting employees because of this fact. Again, this only hurts the children, because the single most important thing in a classroom for student success is the teacher. My second reason is all of these new housing developments you have approved. The formula the state uses to fund schools takes these developments into account, whether the houses are built and sold or not. Every time you approve more houses, the amount of money schools get from the state goes down. The number-one factor homebuyers take into account when buying a home is how are the schools? If you were a prospective homebuyer, would you buy in a county that did not make schools a priority? Finally, if you were a businessman, where would you prefer to place your business? In a county that makes education a priority, which would help you attract quality employees, or in a county who consistently underfunds education? Which would make this county unattractive to prospective employees with children? I understand we have the funds to fully fund schools without raising taxes. If that is the case, why wouldn't we put our children first and fully fund the schools? In fact, Mr. Trampy seems to have found an extra bit of money in excess of $1 million, but instead of saying we found extra money to help the schools, he said we can lower the tax rate. Our number-one priority is the children. Why isn't it yours?
Teri Dusmaris, followed by Rebecca Murray.
My name is Teri Dusmaris, and I'm here this evening representing the Spotsylvania Education Association. Our president could not be with us this evening. As a, and I also am a taxpaying homeowner here and a citizen of the Lee Hills Voting School District. I'm speaking tonight in order, because we thought that you should hear some real-life examples of how doing more with less affects the students of Spotsylvania County Public Schools. What does it really mean to do more with less? It means that close to 80 elementary school students, that's kindergarten through fifth grade, are serviced by one and a third teachers if they're receiving ELL services, that's English language learners. It means that Spotsylvania County Public Schools is currently using the state model of one to 59, which is okay, except for couldn't we do better? That's the minimum requirement for English language services. It means that when we have additional needs arise in the county, more staff isn't hired, we just stretch the staff we have more. So for example, you heard some examples last week from another one of my colleagues, but for, so that you could hear another example, my school was served by one and a half teachers, now we're served by one and a third teachers, meaning that the half teacher that we had is now servicing three schools. So, a newly arrived student at our school, we're really shuffling to try to figure out how to get and provide the mandated services. It means that those required service minutes are really down to the bare bones. It means that the general education teacher is writing additional lesson plans, additional individualized lesson plans, on his or her own time, and learning a second language if they don't already speak that language, so that they can provide the best service possible. Doing more with less means that our opportunity to hire the best and brightest and newest teachers decreases. I have had the pleasure to work for the last two years with a wonderful student from Mary Washington University. She's worked really closely with the third-grade teachers at the school where I teach. She's done her practicum work with us and her student teaching. She's currently still working with us. She will be graduating in May with all of her teaching certificates and a master's degree. She's ready to hit the ground running. She's awesome. She's had three interviews already, and I'm sure that one of those schools is going to offer her a contract. I've seen it happen time and time again, because we're not being able to offer competitive timing of contracts and offerings of salaries. But one of the counties that she's interviewed with so far is going to do that, and she's going to walk across that stage at Mary Washington, and she's going to take that job. And she's single, and she's young, and why shouldn't she? Why should she want to come and work in a county that continuously shows that education is not at the heart of their budgeting? Why should she come and stay here in a county that's showing that the vision and growth mindset necessary to provide professional growth is not where they're best and brightest? I have asked, I have been asked by some people here in the county why some of the people from the Education Association who usually are here speaking up for our students are not here. Well, because we have lost them. They have stood up here and told you time and time again that they may have to make other decisions, and I'm here to tell you that they have. When we tried to gather ourselves together and tried to thought, who can we come up with to come and speak to you? Our normal course of people, they've left. They are now working in other counties, other states, some of them other careers, because they need to provide. They need to make other decisions. And then my final point is just sheer exhaustion. Staff is exhausted. They're exhausted from the extra responsibilities. They're exhausted from the second and third jobs that they're needing to take on, and they're just simply exhausted from the extra time that they're spending on their personal time, keeping up with everything from their current job and any other things that are added on to that job. It's affecting our families, it's affecting our personal wellbeings, and it's affecting the student performance. It's affecting student achievement. And it's been 10 years, gentlemen, doing more with less. Eventually, it's just going to be less. I don't think we should have to do it. We cannot continue to do it. We cannot continue to do more with less. Thank you.
Rebecca Murray.
My name is Rebecca Murray, and I live in the Battlefield District. I'm here tonight as a Spotsylvania County resident, a taxpayer, and a school employee. I'm mostly here as a concerned citizen. I spoke last year and listened while a young man spoke after me and talked about the dog and pony show that the schools put on every year at this time. Kind of made those little hairs on the back of my neck stick up a little, and then I thought, you know, he's right. And isn't that a shame? Every year, year after year, the teachers and parents and students come and beg the schools to be funded. That is wrong. Our schools should be our priority. Our schools should be your priority. I'll let our teachers, parents, and staff speak not only to our schools' needs, but also to our accomplishments that were so well-presented in our school board's budget last week. But you will also hear from people, the ones who claim we don't use our funds properly, we do, or the ones who claim we don't really need what we say we need, also not true. You may hear from the lady who comes every year with her long list of taxes that she may have to pay, including the boat tax and the cigarette tax. Well, if she has a boat and she smokes cigarettes, she should pay those taxes. You also may hear from some patriots. In fact, some of those patriots who have spoken in the past don't live here, vote here, work here, or pay taxes here. Last year, many of those people had shirts that read "We the People." "We the People," the first three words to the preamble to our United States Constitution, "We the People." Those words make me think of James Madison, our third president, and they also make me think of a man named Governor Morris, a real patriot who wrote those words in 1787. What did Mr. Morris have that most of his contemporaries in 1787 did not have? He had an education. By continually failing to adequately fund our schools, you risk denying our children an education that we can provide and that they deserve. I'm not okay with that. Are you?
There are no other citizens signed up to speak?
Is there anybody that's not signed up that'd like to speak at this time?
Good evening. My name is Sue Sargent, Fredericksburg, Virginia, 22401. I'm a preschool speech pathologist with Spotsylvania County Schools. I provide speech and language therapy for preschoolers ages two through five years old before they get to kindergarten, so they will learn to talk clearly. However, I'm up here tonight as a representative of the Wands Up Group. Wands Up is one of 36 organic groups in the area that have formed from the Women's March on January 21, 17. One of the popular signs at the march, which took place that day after the inauguration, had those Harry Potter words on it. "The ministry has fallen. The Death Eaters are in charge." Wands Up. Wands Up considered what is happening in Planning District 16 and voted to focus on Spotsylvania County. We, the people, know that the Spotsie Board of Supervisors is unbalanced with a Tea Party faction majority on it. Good government, in order to function for the good of the people, needs balance. Since you've been elected 10 years of it, you haven't budged from that stick-in-the-mud attitude about public education. It's so dull. Bring back that "quality of life" statement. You took it out from the Spotsie Comprehensive Plan because you, gentlemen up there, didn't know what quality of life means. All the newcomers here know what quality of life means because they moved into the county for that reason. They want a strong public school education for their children and for this community and a safe way to live with quality fire, rescue, and sheriff. And sure hope you know that local and state elections matter, and to vote absentee because of their heavy-duty commute Monday through Friday on I-95, or show up on that rainy Tuesday, November 7th of this year, so it's pushback time. We've had enough, sort of like a touch of Twisted Sister, we're not going to take it. I was a resident of Spotsie from 1980, or the time of the city's annexation, to 2009. My daughters graduated from Massaponics High School, at which they had public school choice. They took advantage of Spotsylvania County Public Schools' choice of taking advanced placement classes, so they passed out of entry-level coursework, college coursework. The choice of competition in Latin curtaumin, the choice of jazz band, the competitions in marching band, staying after hours for every theater production, Odyssey of the Mind. Thanks to Cory Cuck and Kimberly Kemp for still at Massaponics and super committed because they realized that public schools' fine arts is the most profound way in which a group of people can understand their culture. Making music and theater gets at the soul of who we are as a people. We are enriched in the public schools because we welcome all children. Those in and who support public schools share the common American experience of "we the people" in all those formative years from preschool head start through high school years. We are richer in this USA because public school education is with a diverse group of learners of differing abilities, races, gender identities, and financial means. And you have the financial means to fully fund the proposed school budget. It's a skeleton presented now. For years, you have used the Steve Bannon deconstruction playbook. Destroy, then rebuild. Death eaters. Tax rate, it's embarrassing. Add one penny or two before you destroy. Mr. Trampy, the majority of taxpayers, including the 70 percent of the teachers who live in this county, don't need that $25 tax break so you can, we can get two large pizzas on home delivery. This TPO of yours is a vocal minority. Do any human beings ever realize life while they live it? Every, every minute in our town, we want a quality of life. Support public education and fully fund the proposed school budget. Do your job.
There anybody else that would like to speak that hasn't spoke already or not signed up? Okay, we'll close the public presentation time now. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Board members, before we move into the joint work session with the school board, I did want to make an announcement, and I apologize for not making this announcement earlier. We learned this afternoon that Verizon has been experiencing technical difficulties that will prevent today's board meeting from being televised live. I do believe we will have the streaming file of it on the website at a later point. We are not currently live, and I apologize. It was, it's not our issue, it's a Verizon issue.
Thank you.
And if we would, we'd invite the school board members to come forward and the board members to come down for the joint work session.
Good evening, gentlemen. We're passing around some things. So just take one and pass it down. And we have a quorum. Can I have a motion to enter a joint work session? Motion made by Mr. Brazwell, second by Ms. Blalock. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. So according to our topics for discussion, we wanted to start with some opening comments, and I just wanted to, by way of an update, we were able to respond to your questions today, and you should have received that. We know you will need time to review them. We took our time responding in great detail, and it is as thorough as you could ask for, but it is so much information, we obviously had to deliver it on a flash drive, so it will be ready for your review. Also, I emailed Mr. Ross questions from the school board members today. I understand it will take time for the county staff to respond. We want to start with some opening comments. Would like to start with any school board members' opening comments? Nothing, Mr. Supervisors?
Any opening comments from supervisors?
So we'll start with an open discussion. We just wanted to start with any questions you guys might have for us on the budget presentation, the budget book. Any previously asked questions that you wanted us to address before we get into more detailed questions?
Okay. Dr. Trampy.
Not really a question so much as a few comments. Madam Chair, I appreciate your approach and a lot of the things you've said focusing on our expected gain in revenues, which we have every year as a result of economic growth, and I'm, we've had some excellent new economic development projects coming lately, and we expect our revenues to grow. And I want to work with you to make sure that the schools do get a bigger share of the expected increase in revenue, as you've discussed and as your predecessor also commented on this evening. For my entire tenure, I've tried to point out that the assumed correlation between the tax rate and money for schools often doesn't happen. From 2000 to 2010, there were 33 cents worth of tax increases. Very little of that ever got to the schools. In 2010, the Board of Supervisors even spelled out where their three-cent tax increase was going to go, which I guess is good for transparency. None of it went to the schools, and they said so upfront, so I've always tried to emphasize that we can increase funding to the schools without raising taxes, and I want to, I appreciate your comments in that area, and I want to work with you to try and do that this year. I did want to put some of the statistics that have been quoted into context. You've emphasized over the last five years the percentage of new revenues that have gone to schools, and I know you weren't here five years ago, and it's one thing to be able to look up a number, but you might not know the context that resulted in those numbers. When Dr. Redinger arrived in 2012, and I hope it's okay for me to quote this in public, she said that she knew immediately what the problem was when she pulled into the parking lot at the central office building. And she made an effort, and the school board members at that time made an effort to redirect school funds from the central office into the classroom. And she, and those of you who were here at that time, came to this board with a balanced budget. You only asked for level funding. So that wasn't a challenge. We gave you that. That was the fiscal year 2013 budget. In 2014, for the fiscal year 2015 budget, we fully funded the school request, and I know those of you who were here at that time got some pushback from activists for not asking for enough. How can they bash the supervisors if you don't ask for more? How can they bash the supervisors if you don't ask for more? To come back now and say, now, there was a year in between there where we did not fully fund your budget. If you want to criticize us for that, that's fine. But those three years composite. When you say that the schools didn't receive enough of, a big enough percentage of the increased revenues, what you're saying is that we should have granted more funds than were requested. And it feels kind of like a bait and switch. I don't think it was intentional. Like I said, you weren't here, and you might not have been aware of that context. But so I, I think those statistics need to be understood in context. Now, the last two years, I voted against the budget, so I don't feel a strong compulsion to defend them. However, I must say that the current fiscal year's budget, I think the majority that did vote for it can make a case that the, that the schools were treated fairly. You can always say it should have been more, and as a politician, I have to say, I voted for about 1.2 million more than you actually received. But even so, I think the current fiscal year's budget was fair. Now, for my colleagues who, who voted for the budget two years ago, you're on your own. I'm not going to defend that one. So, but enough of, enough of the past five years. Let's get to this year. Like I said, I want to work with you to direct more of the new funds to the schools. If I can go into one more specific question before others speak, or I could wait till The state budget funds half of the pay increase starting in February of 2018. Is that right? Was it clear, and I know we talked last time about your budget being hard to read, the state's budget can be very hard. Was it clear, is that funding going to continue after June 30th, 2018? Is that continuous, or are they just, is that just a one-year?
Expectation.
Okay.
But as we learned with the state. Bring your mic up. It is our expectation, but as we learned last year, that they can change their minds as late as October, so.
Well, I guess I have a question for our finance team. If providing that bridge up until next February, for that half of the pay increases, that's something we could do with one-time money, since the state is going to pick it up from there? And they're not at the table, but we can discuss that any other time. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. McLaughlin.
Yeah, I got a couple, just a couple of questions, and I don't really necessarily need the answers today, but if you can, over time. And some of them are probably recurring that we've, we've gone over time. And I know it tends to go, every year we hear about percentage of the budget that we feel, or the schools feel, that they should just get a percentage of the county budget. I disagree with that. I mean, I think every budget should be based on a requirement. So it may change from year to year, but just getting a standard, every year, a 52% of the budget, that's just not the best way to do budgeting. The budget's based on the requirement each year, and you review it. And I just want to point that out because, I mean, it's with the, you know, not that the federal government's a great example, but everything's based on a requirement. If you don't have the requirement, we don't allocate funding for it. It's not just a straight percentage. So that's just to point that out, because when it comes up, it's just one of those things that I think we need to really look at how we're asking for funding. So, and I don't know that this is, so it seems like year after year, healthcare costs continue to rise, and so is the VRS rate trends and all of those things. What are we doing at the state level to try to correct that? I mean, what are, are we addressing that at that level? Because it seems like the taxpayers are taking the brunt of these increases.
Well, I go weekly when the General Assembly is in session and lobby on behalf of our school board, and I've done that for the past four years. I meet with other groups that are doing the same thing, and we try to meet with every one of our legislators at least once during the session.
So this sounds like something that could be on our legislative agenda to say that needs to be addressed, but could we get something that comes out and says why they're increasing? Why is it 20.7% this year and 20.21% last year?
Well, at one point in time, it is based on claims, but at least Delegate Urock explained to me that during the recession.
Is that healthcare or?
As far as VRS goes.
Okay.
During, during the recession, the state relaxed their contribution amount to try to take it easy on the local governments. And this has been a drastic increase session to try to get back to the target number that they have to be at. So this is a result of the state requirements, not ours. And, and health insurance is based on our claim rate.
And again, I think we've talked about this before, but why weren't they combine the county and the schools into one health system? A larger pool? They're not combined right now, are they?
We are. We are in the sense in two regards. About six years ago, we did enter into a joint RFP, both the county and the schools. By doing so, the county did save $300,000. And what this means basically is that the county is able to take advantage of the schools' clientele, the fact that we are a larger client for Anthem. What it does also mean is that the county and the schools do not have the same plan design, nor the same premium payments, but we are joint from that perspective.
Well, I guess the question.
To take it a step further.
Yeah.
In meeting with Lee Deskins, who is both the county and the schools' health consultant, and we asked Anthem, are there any additional joint ventures that we can engage in from a health insurance standpoint and garner additional savings? The answer is no. We have maximized those savings.
So I guess my question, I thought the county rate of increase is slower, though. Is that correct?
Exactly. We don't have an increase this year either for VRS or for our health insurance claim.
So that's my question. I'm getting confused, and that's where we need to solve this, because we should be on the same, the state system. Why is that not the same, the same? If we're in the same healthcare system, the increases should be the same.
Mr. Chairman.
If I could just shed some light on that.
Yep, go ahead, Mark.
The, the way VRS works is there's different funds. There's a state employee fund. Then there's, each local government has their own fund in VRS. And the schools, however, the schools are one combined statewide fund, but it's separate from the, the state employee fund. And, and it's also like, like, the, the major shortfall is in the teachers' fund. Now, there is, I understand, a little bit of a shortfall perhaps in, in the Spotsy government fund. There's not, mind her, at least how we were briefed this session, is there's no longer a shortfall in the state employee fund. That, that shortfall that, where they deferred payments during the fiscal crisis has been made up. However, the biggest shortfall is in the, the school VRS fund. And, you know, where, you know, if Spotsylvania wanted to, for the general government side, wanted to make an additional contribution to VRS, it would get credited to Spotsylvania because each local government has their own fund. However, it's not true with the schools, since they're a statewide fund. You know, if you tried to contribute extra money into the VRS fund, it would be like, you know, pouring a cup of water into the ocean.
So, so the shortages aren't necessarily because they're managed poorly at the statewide level, or invested poorly, or just?
No, and I would have, you'd have to go back and look at the history as to why there's, there's such a shortfall in the statewide teacher fund. But my understanding is that the VRS funds, they're, they're all managed by the same group, and, you know, they, they have been performing pretty well since the fiscal crisis.
If we could just get that information, how that's done, just for general information. And then about healthcare, we are, we aren't on the same plan.
Look at health insurance. Keep in mind that we're three times the size of the county. So when we look at our claims each year, it's based on claims experience. And so that's why the rate is fluctuating. I think we want to be clear, when you look at the county, Anthem is recommending a increase in the health insurance rate for the county. But the county has made a decision not to move forward with the increase because you have a health insurance reserve that you can dip into. So you are getting health insurance rate increases. You're opting not to move forward with those. Whereas the school division, yes, we do have a health insurance reserve, however, the amount is not where it should be. So we have to fund it each year in order to be solvent.
So that's ultimately the question. So there's no benefit to being all in the same pool, then?
The benefit that we've already garnered, six years ago, when we combined, the county did save that $300,000. The only additional way that you can have a lower employer cost is to take your premiums, pass them on to the employee, or you revise the plan design so that the plan design is not as rich. Those are the ways that you save funds. Speaking of that, the school board did do that. You will recall initially when Dr. Baker presented his budget, there was a gap of 6.5 million. The school board rolled up their sleeves, and they were able to reduce that gap by 1.7. Three ways. Number one, they worked with Anthem to renegotiate the prescription drug costs, saved $850,000. We also looked at our stop-loss deductible. We removed that from being 150 to 100, to 200,000. Then we took the dental premiums. Before, the school board was paying 100%. Now, the employee would pick up 25% of that. That was $1.9 million in heavy lifting. This has already been done.
Just a quick follow-up. What's the history behind the schools' reserves fund and why it's not where it should be?
It's not where it should be in regards to the fact that we just became self-funded about six years ago. It's my understanding that the county has been self-funded at least in the double digits, maybe 15, 20 years. So it does take time to build up that reserve. Also, one of the things that we've noticed over the last few years, the claims that are beginning to come in for our employees, we are having claims in excess of $150,000. So because of those actual claims, you're not able to save those funds.
Okay. Couple more quick ones here.
Can I say something to clarify just on that? Just to touch base on this reserve issue. Both of, both the county and the schools have self-funded plans. We pay the bills, basically. And we, in order to do that, we have to have a reserve. That's part of the process. We do have two different, like LaShawn said, two different sets of coverages. If you go look at our plan, our plan is different than theirs, but we are managed by one group. That's where the savings came in. Anthem came in together, and there were significant savings in managing it together. But we still make decisions on coverage separately. And, and LaShawn is right. In the past couple of years, they have, Anthem, every year comes back with a renewal. They tell us what they expect that we should increase our rates by using trends and using what's happening in the county. And years ago, we used to bump it up a little bit, and then we started realizing, you know, even though they're saying we should anticipate an increase, it's not always happening. And we do have a health insurance reserve for this purpose. It gives us the flexibility to make that decision. So we have decided, no, we're not going to raise the rate this time, either for the county or the employees. And for the last two years, we've been successful with that. Now, we have a different pool of people than the schools have, so it is, it is a difference there. But we, we did, we did make the decision this year to not raise those rates again. We do not anticipate that we will need to dip into the health insurance reserve, but if we would, would need to, it is there. We watch it every month, and we would certainly let you know as soon as there was an issue there. But for two years in a row, we have not had to raise those rates. And from the VRS perspective, Mr. McLaughlin, that decision, as LaShawn noted on the school, that was a decision by the state not to increase those contribution rates when the recession was low. They intentionally did that so that the localities and the state would not have to pay their share of it. They are catching up. And, and it's my understanding, LaShawn, correct me if I'm wrong, this is the last big year of catch-up. After this, we shouldn't, they should not see the significant increases if the market cooperates. I mean, those are all based on assumptions with the market. No one has any idea how that, what that's going to do, so.
Mr. McLaughlin, if I might just add a couple of things. One, just generally, not only the school board's work leading up to their presentation last week, but ongoing, we acknowledge we have to continue to determine ways to reduce costs when it comes to our health insurance because of the, at least the five budgets that I've overseen. This is, three out of those five years, we've had a significant increase in our premiums. And, and that, again, puts us in, in that deficit position in terms of our budget. And I also appreciate, Mr. Trampi was, Dr. Tr, excuse me, Dr. Trampi was cataloging some of the years and the requests that we've made. I can acknowledge that two of the years when we came in and made an ultimate request, I believe one year about 1.6 million, maybe 1.9 million, the other 1.3 million above level, were the two best years that we had in terms of our health insurance costs. And so sometimes that, those are the things that we have struggled with in terms of just the ability to control those costs. But part of our work with Anthem will include the, the development of a five-year plan to try to both maintain the quality of our benefit, because it's extremely important to our, our employees, but also to determine ways to better manage the cost, because we do need to be able to build up our reserve to another level. And, you know, this is the second straight year that we're hesitant to dip into that because it's the second straight year we've had a significant increase in claims.
So switch subject a little bit here. So the, so I got one of the slides talked about 38% of the students who are free and reduced lunches. Is 40% the number where everybody gets free lunch? That the, isn't there a magic number? Like City of Fredericksburg, don't they all get free lunches at this point? Only elementary? Is that the same for?
I work in Fredericksburg City. I work in the middle school. Everyone in my school does not get free or reduced lunch.
So it's just elementary?
Or free lunch. I believe it is only the lower elementary school, not even the upper elementary school.
And another slide was the, you're showing projection in growth. That based on, so it's been kind of the student enrollment population's been up and down over the last several years, but, so this year we had a little increase, but you're projecting several hundred additional students in the next couple of years. Is that based on?
We had a internal study that was done through Mosley Architects to try to help us not only look at our current space, our facilities. It was a space study, but a combination was to help us to get ahead of managing potential future growth. And so they worked, I think, also with the county folks on a, on a methodology, which is primarily, and Mr. Rupp goes in the room if I get off track, but, to primarily looking at our birth rate and students coming into school and where with, and they factor in, and I don't have the number off the top of my head, the developments and the potential growth in the county. But that's what that is based on. I don't have the hard, fat, fast statistics on it.
So based on the projection, we're not looking at any new schools anytime soon? Is that what you're showing?
No. We do have a significant renovation at Cortland High School, and part of the consideration of that high school as we speak is not only to renovate it with its systems and its infrastructure, but also to look potentially at increasing some capacity, which would give us some additional flexibility, especially with three of our other high schools being either at or over capacity.
Okay. Two more quick ones, and this is really definition. On the, this one slide, it talked about leadership capacity through academies, LLE, TLA, TCA, LEED. I just don't know what those are.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, too many acronyms. The Leadership Learning Exchange was something that we began really about six or seven years ago, one year before I came in as superintendent. And it has grown to become a division-wide, as it, as the title would suggest, a learning exchange. But it's, it's really our primary way to, at the end of each school year, look at how we've performed. And in a number of different areas that we need to focus on as leadership, we try to, to provide training and professional development to kind of begin gearing up for the next school year. And one of the reasons that we have acknowledged it as a highlight is we're extremely proud of how it has grown to become inclusive, not just of central office staff or principals that are, that are designated in administrative or leadership roles, but so many teachers that come off contract to participate in and help move our school division forward. The other leadership academies include, we have our assistant principals and instructional coordinators that we try to make sure they're getting as much support and training along with their principals throughout the year. And we've also had teachers as leaders and teachers as coaches. Dr. Trampi mentioned my predecessor and the year that I worked as assistant superintendent, and then transitioning into the next year. And I, I think it also speaks to the, while it's an empowerment for our teachers, it's also additional responsibilities. But the leaner we get, and in some cases needed, at the administrative levels, we have to work in terms of moving various things forward, instructionally and leadership-wise, through our teacher leaders. So those academies were to try to build capacity at the classroom level, the teacher level, to help move forward things that are best practices for students, and even leading conversations about how we can best do the work. And not to give you more detail than you're looking for, but one of the central concepts or notions in that is what we call professional learning communities. And it's the idea that working in collaborative teams or networks is the most efficient and best way for teachers to learn on the job. So it's a way to, at a much lower cost, provide job-embedded. So, it's a way to, at a much lower cost, provide job-embedded professional development training, because oftentimes, the best experts are the ones that are actually doing the work in the classroom. That's probably way more than you wanted.
Thanks.
Anything else?
Yeah, last one. Advanced Ed, what is that?
Yeah.
Is that what this slide is?
Yes. Advanced Ed was formerly known, and I don't know if it helps, as the Southern Association of Colleges and Schools, but it's an international accrediting agency. And well before the states got into the accreditation through high-stakes testing, Advanced Ed, then known as SACS, was part of helping to do quality assurance reviews based on standards. And several years ago, the school division became one of only a, probably a third of the school divisions in the state to be district accredited by Advanced Ed. And so, they send in a team to review your strategic planning process as well as your performance, and they have a number of different quantitative and qualitative metrics that they use to provide you feedback on how you're performing as a school division, as it relates to planning and the standards, and also to give you commendations and feedback as to, you know, what you're doing well. And so, those themes that I think Ms. Blalock shared were just some closing thoughts, but there is a full report, if you'd ever like to look at it, from 2015 that has their entire full report in terms of their feedback and all the analytics that go with that.
Thanks.
Any other questions for the board? Mr. Skinner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, my question is, and it's more for you to explain this. I was going through the budget by our county administrator, and on page five, he mentions that Mandated Children's Services Act, the CSA, okay? Cost continues to rise. We have added 500,000 of the budget to be consistent with the fiscal year 2016 actual expenditures and trends in programs utilization. Approximately half of the full program cost of 8.5 million is expected to stem from schools' individual education programs, the IEPs, placements into private day facilities. So, this is a catch-all, I think. And this is what I think board members need to know. I know the school board member knows this, but the public needs to know this, too. So, in order for not to shell these out, and I will tell you, at one time, we had children going to Manassas for autism, and that cost us a bus, a bus driver, and I believe an assistant on that bus to take them there. We have then moved that to John J. Wright. Is that correct, or we have our own autism school here? All right? So, what I'm saying is, in order for us to prevent more private day facilities, as was put in the county administrators, we either give you the money to make that difference, to make up what we can do here, okay? And if not, we shouldn't hold, because when we look at his, you know, we talk about the local effort required for SOQs. Let's face it, the state sets those requirements, the formulas. And it can go up each year, up or down, whichever way the Assembly wants to play it, okay? It really does. And take a look at it afterwards. So, I guess, what do we, how do we really set the standards of quality? Currently, with what we've gotten here, with the, I believe what we set for 54,026, with the more students per teacher, as we just heard up here, where we now have one-on-one third teacher going out there for classes, we've got to figure out, where do we set the standards of qualities for our kids? Okay? And that's what people have to understand. With the money that we're giving you right now, we cannot perform the quality. What we should say is, what we've given you is the standards of quality, the standards of minimum qualities set by the state, okay? And I wanted you guys to expand on that a little bit, because this is something that people need to know, okay? We have to come up as a board, or I should say, the school board should come up with the board and say, hey, here's what we got to do in order to give our kids a good quality of education, okay, and to be competitive with surrounding localities or anybody within the states, or now states are, we're competing against people all over the world. And I would like to figure out how you guys can do that, because that's how I think we support you the best, is what is the minimum quality, as they've stated here, I think it is, but what we really want, what is a true standard of quality for Spotsylvania education? Okay? And that's what I would like to see, because right now, I don't think we're doing it. And I think you, as a board, need to explain, Dr. Myers, exactly, how do they do it with the student ratio and the teachers you have now?
It's a loaded question.
Absolutely, but it's a good one.
And I think, thanks for bringing it up, because it leads into, the budget that the school board has prepared is not a budget of umpteen needs that we know that, you know, we can't meet all the requests we have. We didn't ask for any additional staffing for our teachers, for our students. We know that, you know, our normal, regular student body is slightly decreasing, but our special population groups are continuing to increase. And that's where our staff needs are, whether it's special ed or the English second learners, you know, that. The SOQs are truly minimums devised by the General Assembly, approved by the General Assembly for funding purposes. And it really is only funding at the minimum level. But, one of the things that the SOQ does that puts us in a position to have to come to you folks this evening, and it highlights the three areas that we identified, the health insurance, the VRS, and the COLA. The COLA is a cost of living. It's not a salary increase, it's a cost of living adjustment. That's a minimum. It's not, you know, we would love to come in with a 5, 10, or 7%, but we are also trying to do our homework through the Evergreen Study, so that we can come to you with data that shows. We do comparisons, but we need the true data, because we recognize we do have problems within our 100-plus salary scales, you know, that we need to correct. But, it's going to cost money to correct it, and so, we're not ready to come to you yet. But, there's where, when we do have the information, we do plan to come forward with what are our needs in that regard. So, going back to the SOQ. The SOQ hinges on the Local Composite Index, which has a built-in formula that says, in rough terms, 50/50. The state comes in with 50%, the other 50% should be borne by the locality. Hence, the burden that's created when the state creates the VRS rate, you know, 50% of that or half of the personnel that is funded by the state, the other half has to be funded by the locality, which requires the VRS, requires the health insurance, you know, everything that goes with that. And the COLA or something that we can retain our staff. Our three biggest numbers that are in this budget are the increase for the health insurance, of which we are already passing on 5% to our employees, and 25% for the dental. The VRS anticipates that half of the individuals need to be furnished the VRS payment, because the only other half of the money is coming from the state. The state gave us 900,000. 1.4 needs to come from the locality. See how they're splitting it? Okay? So, those kind of commitments, the SOQ defined that through the composite index. And that's how the burden is being passed on to the locality, and the school board is caught with, well, how do we do it? You know, do we cut staff in order, because we don't have the money, that's the only other place we can go? We don't give a COLA? So, you know, those are the, you know, the problem areas that we're confronted with. And it puts us in a position to have to say, you know, this is our situation. It is certainly, we have far more needs and greater needs, but, you know, this is a minimum. Certainly is not a maximum or outlandish needs. We're just trying to be able to fund our basic needs.
My whole point here is that we're not at the level of the SOQs that we should be at. At state.
Correct.
I mean, we're not there.
But, we're not even meeting the minimum in some areas. We have a rider from the state allowing us to not meet the minimum because of our lack of funding. So, we don't even meet the minimum SOQ, much less the desired SOQ that you're talking about. So, I'd like to get us to where we're meeting all areas, which administration is where we lack the most. And we also lack in therapists, welfare officers, and speech therapy. There are some admin positions as well as specialty positions that we do not meet the SOQs, and those are the minimum levels, much less the desired levels.
And much of this is brought on because of mandates, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And once again, and not, I'm not talking to local here. I'm not, I'm not problem with locals. What I am saying is that, once again, we see the state throwing our mandates at us and not funding the mandates as they should fund. And that's why I think, and I'm saying, I'm not blaming any local here, but there's got to be some responsibility put on the state to step up and start funding people because of the mandates that they put on school boards, even on the local boards, the supervisors.
Well, I've suggested a couple of times in our board meetings, and I think I suggested it last year at the work session, that our legislative agendas should coincide, they should work together, since we go as a group once a year to lobby, but we also, I go every week, as I already said, so if our legislative agendas could at least coincide, and maybe there's a designated person on your board who can go lobby with me, then we're making, you know, a joint effort at attacking some of those mandates instead of just the school board doing it alone.
Well, I do want to agree with Mr. Tim McLaughlin over there, because Tim said we should be fulfilling requirements, other words, known as needs. We've always said, you know, too many people think that we fund wants. I don't think we've ever been in the last 14 years funding wants. We've always been cut back to needs. Other words, Tim did mention the word requirements. And these are requirements that we need to do, and we need to be fully aware of what those requirements are from the school, okay? And that's what I'm saying. When you talk about, now, you can say basic needs, but, you know, do you want to give your child a basic education, or do you want to give your child an advanced education to compete in this world when they graduate? Also, for college, because you're competing for entrances into other colleges and stuff of that nature, okay? So, that's fine. Did you have something to say? I know you were reaching over, sir.
I just wanted to point out, really, in fairness to ourselves, is the phrases like "not meeting the requirements" have been flying around the room, that, so for FY18, our SOQ required local effort, if I have this right, was 54 million, or is 54,026,264, and we're funding that. And there is a required local match for non-SOQ programs of another 2,27,314, and we're funding that. And also, in the proposed budget, on top of debt service, which is another 25 million and a half, we are proposed an additional local transfer above and beyond what's required by the state of 40,26,161. So, the suggestion, I just, in fairness to our taxpayers and everyone at this table and everyone in this room, our community is already committed beyond the minimum of what is required by the state for public education. I don't respectfully to all believe that's the debate at all. We might have a lovely discussion about how much is enough, but it's not fair to my staff, frankly, to make the suggestion that we are not meeting the minimum requirement because we are at a proposal right now that is more than 40 million dollars over the required.
Again, I would like to say, when I preference this, I'm not talking about local. I'm talking about our state. And I've said that. I'm not, anybody here or this locality, I, you are funding exactly what the state says the minimum is to fund. And I'm saying that the minimum by the state is not right. The state has to step up and tell us to raise their standards, okay, and bring that up to maybe 60 million dollars or something, which would give you the extra 4.7 million dollars. I am not putting the blame on this locality whatsoever, or your staff. They've done a great job. My whole point is, the Assembly has a tendency to put mandates on localities and not fund them. And why they come out of. They come out of things that we have to mandate, and what's left over, we either give firefighters or schoolteachers or something like that raised. It's wrong. It's absolutely wrong. And they've done it over and over, and I know that Mr. Yakubowski over there has said many a times on this board what the state has done to us and thrown it down on this. So, I am not blaming anybody on the state, but what I'm saying is, these minimums are not acceptable, I think, in Spotsylvania. It's probably not acceptable throughout the state of Virginia, okay? And somebody's got to step up down there and start doing something to make our children, because I believe if you look at where Virginia rates in education throughout the United States, it's not very high. Well, maybe it is very high, and it should be very low. It should be in the top 10, I would hope, but it's not. It's far from it. Yes?
Ms. Shelley. Thank you for that. I agree. We should be funded more by the state. We've, as we mentioned last year or the year before, we were a team of locals that went to the state to ask for more money, for more funding for our schools. We see nothing changed with that, or very little changed with that. But, I do want to correct, I do want to mention something that Mr. Taylor did say about the local match. And you're right, the county is paying way more than what the local match should be. But, I also want to note that in the last, and I, for some reason, did not write down the number of years, but I think it was the last five or six years, our local match should have been 10,264,774, yet it was only 6,000, 6,349,306, which leaves a deficit of 3,915,468. In the last five years, that 6 million, that 6.3 million is what extra we have gotten from the state, and I mean, from the local, from Spotsylvania County government for our budget, yet our required local effort was over 10 million dollars.
I just want to, historically, Mr. Skinner's going to recall this, and I think you'll recall when the state was calculating the SOQs, it was based on not only our professional staff, but also support staff. When the, because of the recession, everything, SOQ got redefined, all the funding for support staff, which for us is 1,500, 1,600 employees, we do not receive the SOQ monies that accompanied the support staff. And some of it's starting to come back, but you're right, that's when it really fell, you know, the support that came from the state really fell to the wayside. And the SOQ was always a minimum. It was never anticipated to be meet the truly needs of a division. They were minimums, bare, bare minimums. So, in that regard, we've never really come back to this level of support that should be in support of the SOQs. And the locality has always had to step up to the plate to make up the difference.
Mr. Skinner, do you have anything else later on towards the end?
We're just, just to move a little more on SOQs, we're glad we brought this up. They, as Dr. Myers said, none of the support staff is funded by the state, some of it, but a lot of it, our maintenance staff isn't.
Just that some of them are.
Okay. Couple of them are. Bus drivers are. But, very minimum levels. So, but 132 school systems out of 132 school systems staff above the SOQs. So, it's standard that you need more than the required SOQ, minimum effort positions to run a school system. So, 100% of the school systems exceed the staffing, so.
Mr. Sebelo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say, looking around the table here, it is a round table, so therefore, nobody should get backed into any corners. So, I just want to, I wanted, I've got a couple of comments, and I want to set up a scenario that perhaps I may be mistaken on, but I would like to put that forward. But, first, we talked about special ed students to Manassas. I know we also have special eds, a lot of special ed students going to Richmond. And this is, this is an expense that I don't think the general public realizes that you have on your side of the voucher. Now, having said that, no one is to take offense. My figures are just general for understanding, but I, first off, it's my understanding, and I'm using, again, this average figures, our student
average figures, our student cost is about $10K per student, just in general, okay? And I also understand, we have approximately 200 teachers who live outside of the county. Of those 200 teachers, I'm going to assume, because I have no idea, but just for purposes of understanding, that each of those teachers may have one student, who they bring to Spotsylvania County, and we educate them here in Spotsylvania County, not within the county in which they live. Now, what I don't know is, what the county gains per student from the state, or what the individual counties, and I know that that has to be a different figure, but where I'm going with this, this is a good program. I see nothing wrong with the program, but what I'm going, what I'm looking for here is, is there a way that we can recoup some of these costs? Does the state pay us for those students? I'm sure the answer is no. They do? Okay. So, so the county that they're coming from doesn't get it, and we are getting it. That answers my question. I've set up my scenario, but, okay. Thank you very much.
Is that the full amount, the full funding of $10,500 per student that we get from?
From the state, we do receive $5,500 for each student, so when you look at the number of students that we do have, we're getting about 1.1 million from the state for those students.
How many students do we have in that scenario? Do you have that?
We have 198.
Oh, that was pretty close to mine, yeah. Thank you, that's all I have right now. Chris?
Thank you. First of all, thank you, everybody, for coming this evening. I was going to start with a joke, but apparently that... Yes, I just did. Thank you, Mr. Sebelo. No, thank you for coming, and thank you for everybody who's here this evening. I have a sheet of questions, and so please allow me to try to get through them, and if you need to interrupt and answer at any time, just jump right in, no problem. You know, this is my eighth budget. I know, back when Dr. Meyer was part of the administration, he was going through this from that side of the dais, and, and I don't mean this to sound rude, but we keep hearing the exact same thing. You're underfunded, it's the state's fault, a question about this or that, and why is funding this way or that way? How many special ed kids do we have? You know, what kind of buses do we do? You know, what programs do we have? How many new teachers? How many teachers have left? I mean, it's kind of programmed, almost, and when it gets down to it, you know, you guys should understand that there's no money. And there's, and there's a reason that there's no money. Because of that $7 million that has come in this year, we do have things that we have to pay. We have set up financial guidelines. It was noted before by one of the speakers, that we do have financial guidelines, and we implemented new ones last year. And why we did that was to make our finances even more solid, and you saw that we got a AAA rating from our bonding agency, from one of them, which is highly prized, and another one moved us up, and the other one kept us where we are, which is, it's always good to stay where you are, and not to be moved down. And, and so the problem that you have, is you have $7 million, you take that money, you take out the needs that we have, the bills that need to be paid, to put into everybody's terms, that we understand, and out of that, we don't take into account that the schools are part of the budget, for some odd reason. You know, I look at the budget book, and you're in there. You're in there as a line item, you're in there as a category, you know? You're in there a lot, because there's a lot of money that goes to the school system. But, we don't, and I say "we," it's the county, for some reason, does not include your bills that are due, as part of the bills that we, as the people that write the checks, and are entrusted with the taxpayer dollars, to give you. For example, if we had another department, let's just say the Sheriff's Department, for example, and the General Assembly, I hope I'm not giving them an idea, because you know how they get with ideas, but if they all of a sudden said that all of our squad cars had to be, you know, natural gas squad cars, would we turn to the Sheriff's Department and say, well, figure it out? Find it in your budget, cut something? You know? We've given you money over the past years, so figure out where you're going to do it? Or would we sit there and say, this is part of the county that we run, and there is a need that they have, that is clearly stated, and we need to step up and pay it? And that's why I hope the rest of the board, when I'm going to put together a budget scenario of bills that are due, and how, and we must pay those first. It's not right to sit here and say to any one department, that you're not getting basically anything. You're getting less than a part of a percent. And quite honestly, that's insulting. And nothing against our libraries, we love our libraries, and it's sad that we always have to put a caveat on this stuff, but our libraries are receiving more of a local transfer increase this year than our school system. And that, to me, is just, it's wrong. It's not, it's not how our priorities should be. Which then leads me to why we don't have a strategic plan. It was stated before, while our strategic plan is stated, and how we spend our money. Well, apparently, this year, guys, nobody likes the school system, because in this budget, there's hardly any money of an increase for you. To say that you don't ask for any, and that's why you don't receive any, I do remember, and Dr. Meyer, you'll remember, back when you did ask, and other school systems do ask. And then what happens is, you all are vilified for simply asking the question of, this is what we need. So, you spend the time to pare down to an amount that you could take to us, that you think might be palatable, and might get a part of it passed. And so, is that really a needs-based budget at that point? Or is that a, what we think might get four votes on this board passed? And that, to me, is wrong also. You know, actually, in the paper, just, when was this? 14 hours ago? Fredericksburg City Council, to hold Strategic Vision Work Session. Little old Fredericksburg, which is about one size of, or is the size of one of our precincts, you know? They put together a Strategic Vision Work Plan, and you know what they do with that? They also align their strategic visions into an Economic Development Master Plan. So, it's unfortunate that they're actually holding it right now, but maybe I can watch a tape, or at least get some ideas of what they're doing, because quite honestly, we don't do it. We're sitting here at the same table, asking the same questions, having you all beg for the same amount of money, maybe a little bit more, maybe a little bit less, and I'm not sure what we're actually trying to accomplish. You know, Dr. Trampy has put forward a budget proposal, and I do respect Paul for doing that, you know? He puts forward one, I put forward one, he doesn't like mine, I don't like his, and that's kind of what we do. But, but his proposal is, a lot of it is half-year hires, or splitting CIP projects into two years. And then the one that I just can't support, and I'm bringing this up, because somebody had raised that there was a way to save a million dollars, it's delaying our fiscal guidelines, basically violating our fiscal guidelines, because we have a target of, I think it's 5% that we're looking for, to pay cash to CIP, and we're at 3.25, and we're going to go up to 3.5, and that's roughly $900,000. And, and if we were to violate that, in my opinion, I think that that would not, that's not something we need to do. I think that a way to raise revenue, and to look at this budget, is an increase of 1.5%. That's it. If you go back to the early 2000s, when your guys, and anybody who's lived here for years will remember the 90s and the 2000s, when school population was just increasing. And you can go and look at those schools, and see the plaques that are on there of when they were built, and if you were lucky enough to be a board member at that time, your name is on like six or seven schools, because that's how many schools were being built at that time. And we haven't built a new school since Cedar Forest, is it? 2008. 2008? Really? Is that one, okay. But that was back in like 2007, it was, yeah, it was...
2007.
Okay. That's why my name's not on there, that's why, yeah. Wasn't on the board at the time. But the point being, is that, at some point, this growth will come. We see the federal government, and for all the pros and cons, the one pro that we're seeing is, stock market is up, anticipation for growth is up, and for anybody to think that our 15,000 units that have already been approved, and are sitting there, waiting to be built on, are not going to be built, you know, that makes absolutely no sense. So, when that time comes, to spend the money to build the schools, we don't have the revenue. If you constantly reduce the revenue down to a, what is it called? The, sorry, the equalized rate, claiming that it's not a tax increase, simply because you don't want to be called a tax increaser, but you're not planning for the future. Look, 1% growth this year, 1.5% increase in our budget, and you guys get nothing. And you know what? If you, and ask our finance staff, if we actually got the J-ramp, if the federal government came in, and we tried to get the J-ramp to come off at 126, the feds came up and said, you can't do it. Roughly $25 million, $30 million project, somewhere in there. If they did not say that, we would have to pay that bill. $3.2 million would have to be taken out of that $7 million pie that we started with, before any money is spent on anything. And you know what? That money has now been kicked down to 2021, I do believe, 2024, in our budget. But regardless, we owe that money. We know that we're going to have to pay that in the future. And to consistently sit here and say, well, in the future, we'll have more money, or maybe next year, it will be better, is just, it's not the way that I think that we should be doing budgets. Now, I do have a couple of questions for you guys. The enrollment is always looked at as an enrollment decline, and since there's a decline, geez, you know, you don't have a student, that's $10,000, why doesn't your budget be reduced by the side, or the side of the county, which is 5,000? So, you have 100 less kids? You know, 5,000 times 100? You do the math, because I'm tired, but it's 500,000? And, you're nodding, so I'm going to go with that, then. So, it's $500,000, right? That's not what happens. You guys still have increases, as we see, in mandated costs of health insurance, and everything else, plus, and this was stated somewhere, I don't remember where, but whoever stated it, this was very well stated, it's not a decrease in one school, in one classroom, it's spread over 30 some odd schools that we have. So, you might have one kid per classroom, so you're not feeling the effects of reduced classroom sizes, because your enrollment went down by 100 or so kids. And so, I think I answered the question that you were, that I asked of you, so, sorry about that. And then the other thing is the, our transportation fund, our enrollment, new houses, but the fact that, oh, and getting back just to the population increase, and I need to say this again and again, if you go back and you look at your slide that you had presented, those years back then, those 900, I think there was a year, there was 900 kids or so that had come in, it was just, it was, it was a lot, maybe it was over a few, I'm sorry? Just short of 1,000. That is a real bill that comes due. And so, we can bask in the ability to not have to pay that right now, but if we're consistently setting ourselves up for a future where the money is even less, if we don't have the money to do it now, how do you expect to have it in the future? Houses cost money, residents cost money, services cost money, and I'm not here advertising or asking for a tax increase on the tax rate, or any of the other rates. What I'm simply saying is, if you don't have a strategic plan, you don't have a way to pay for things, then each year, we're going to be sitting here at the same table, looking at each other, asking the same questions, going away, thinking that something's going to happen, and we have the same outcome. And I, for one, would like to change that. So, thank you for listening to me.
Any other comments from the board? Thank you. All yours.
Okay. Before we move on to the outlook portion, I want to just make sure that none of these board members have replies to your opening comments, and I think Ms. Shelley and Ms. Blaylock definitely do, or anybody down there on the list? Okay. Don would like to have the floor. Sorry, Ms. Shelley.
Thank you. I just, I've been going through your budget, as well as you've been going through our budget, and I just wanted to mention a couple of things that I've found, you know, with the schools are getting 0.2% increase. Information Services, a 16% increase. Non-depart, non-depent, I can't even say it. Departmental, thank you, is a 40% increase. And I'm just mentioning the double digits. Commonwealth Attorney, 12%. The Assessment Office, 11%. County Administrator, 30%. Planning, 19%. Registrar Electoral Board, 18%. Magistrate, 37%. All of these are percent increases. Yet the schools, which serve nearly 24,000 students, which include, and that's citizens of Spotsylvania County, their parents, which are citizens of Spotsylvania County, staff members, which is 71% of our staff, are Spotsylvania County residents, so probably at least 50,000 to 60,000 people that are involved in the schools, and that's a 2% increase. And then, over the last 10 years, I just looked at some budget numbers, the schools over the last 10 years have had a 3% budget increase. Regional Detention Center has had a 32% increase, yet maybe if the schools were able to educate the students, there might not be as much of an increase needed in the detention center. The Sheriff's Department has had a 45% increase. Social Services, 47%. Fire and Rescue, 88% increase over the last 10 years. The Planning Department, 171% increase over the last 10 years. And once again, the non-depen, why am I struggling? Thank you, I'm struggling with that word tonight. 202% increase over the last 10 years. Like, as once again, schools only 3% increase. Over 50,000 of the Spotsylvania County residents are part of the schools. Yet, they have one of the minimal increases in this county's budget. I'm not saying raise taxes. I don't want my taxes raised either, but there needs to be a way of budgeting, so that our students and our citizens who are involved with the schools are appreciated.
Why does that keep turning off? I just wanted to respond to Dr. Trampy's original comment, I've been waiting, and I have been here for four of those five budget seasons, and I think the reason why that us getting 19%, us the schools, of the added revenues in the last five years, is so crucial, because taking into account your point, that we haven't asked for more than we needed, should give us credit and respect on behalf of the county and the Board of Supervisors, to know that we're being fiscally responsible, and we're not going to ask you for something we don't need. So, these are bills, we only included, there's a couple added things that we were able to include in our budget, which someone mentioned... include in our budget, which someone mentioned in a prior board meeting, that we were able to fund through grant money. It's not part of the budget, it wasn't part of that, one of those was the pilot program for activity buses. That was not an added expense of local funds at all. We were able to do that through other funding. This, the local requests we're making are three bills that we have no control over and that we have been fiscally responsibly everywhere else, and this is us saying, this is the best budget we're able to bring to you. I think the fact that we, six weeks before we came to you, the budget gap was even higher, just shows that we did our due diligence to reduce the gap even further. As we have in prior years, we didn't ask for more than we need. So that is what we need to do this bare minimum. So I just was hoping that we would get respect from that, not criticized for that.
That was certainly not a criticism that you asked for that amount. But I wanted to put in context how it came about that your funding wasn't as high as a percentage of increasing revenues. I've never hesitated to give credit to Dr. Redinger, Dr. Baker, and the school board for moving funds into the classroom and improving the school system that way. I will continue to give you credit for that.
Well, we thank you very much. If we can move on to just discuss the county's budget methodology for allocating funds to schools and just get some ideas on how to make this process better for everyone. We would like to ask on your thoughts if, in the future, there was any support to get mandatory increases such as the VRS and health insurance just automatically added so it doesn't come away from the teachers and to the students. Our argument would be if, say, our budget this year is the exact same as the budget last year, there are nothing added except for these mandates. So as far as the state mandate, it's just a pass-through mandate. We feel that it shouldn't come, our staff or our students shouldn't suffer because of a pass-through mandate. So we were wondering your thoughts on that just being added into the baseline. And then, just wanted to get LaShawn to share with us any trend rates for the VRS on both sides, just to give us a heads up for the future, as we did last year. We let you know last year, this double-digit increase this year. And then, we would also like to hear your thoughts on how you feel about if, we've heard you say many other times, some of you, that if there's a pay raise for the schools, there should also be one for the county. Well, we also feel the same way. If there's one proposed for the county, why isn't there one included in the baseline for the schools? So we were just hoping to get some thoughts, if we could work together to agree to either try to have the same percentage always for, because everybody's a county employee, doesn't matter which side there is. If we're going to give one, we should give the other. That's been said before, we agree with that. Can we get a baseline that that's always going to be in the budget for us? And just want to get an idea of some salary trends with how those have been happening in the past.
My personal opinion is it's a requirement. And I think that when you submit a budget, you should submit your requirements to this board. Okay? And then it's up to this board to decide, and working with you, this is joint section, we really need to sit down more often and say, "Okay, as Mr. Jakubowski says, here's what we've got left over words our priority's going to be." As far as the county and the school system getting a joint raise, I support my county officials when I was on the school board, I supported teachers. When I come to this side of the board, then I've got good people who are just as good as the teachers. We have some fantastic staff, whether in the education or whether in service to our county here, that deserve a raise too. But one of the things I want to bring up there is, I've talked to some of the teachers out there, and one of the problems they're having is they're stuck on a step. And I think we're going to see this not only in the school district, but also in a fire department and stuff like this. Why should people stick around here when we all know that your retirement is based on your highest three years paid? I've got a gentleman I've talked to that's a teacher that has had not a step raise, and he's stuck, I think, on step 25. Now, you know, after 25 years, folks, that makes a big difference in what you're going to get from the retirement system of VRS. And what I would like, this is my personal opinion, where I'd like to see the schools, and we could probably even look, is how we do our, and I'm not totally sure whether we have steps or we just pay salaries, stuff like this. I don't think we do the same thing. But what I'm trying, is I think it's more important for your teachers to have the step increase than just a raise. I mean, a raise is a one-time down. So you need to focus on, in my opinion, the school board, is the step. And I think that is a requirement too, folks, whether it's a pay raise or not. And since we don't have maybe the same financial system that you have as far as steps, and then you've got your COLAs, and you've got your raise, all that stuff, you as a board need to decide throughout your educational association what's important to the teachers out there. And there's no doubt in my mind that every teacher, and the ones I've spoke to so far, they're very frustrated right now because they're stuck at this level, and they're not getting, sure, they get a raise, but it's not counting towards their retirement as much as it's, well, that's what, it wouldn't, let me ask you this. Let me rephrase it, it wouldn't count as much as if it was a step?
A point of clarification, Mr. Skinner.
Okay, thank you.
So when you look at the school division, we have over 100 pay scales. And what we've done over the last several years, when you look at steps, if you move from one step to the next, not every employee actually would even receive a monetary increase. So in some regards, in a lot of regards, getting a COLA of 2% or 3% is much better than getting a step. Point in case, if you look at our teacher pay scale, step 0 to 13, most of those are less than 2%. So if they got a step, their retirement would be less, rather than if we were to give them a 2% COLA or 3%. Another point in case, when you look at VRS, it is not based on a step. It is based on your top three average consecutive years of salary. Steps is not a component. So we want to dismay that myth. Steps have nothing to do with VRS. It's your pay.
Let me ask you this, okay. Would you say that the step, then, somebody would get less money with a step than they would with a 2% COLA? Is that, is that the average? So you're saying, then if, then why, okay, then why not, if that's the case, then why use steps? Because there are some times where steps, you get more than 2%. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, so for the individual teacher, what is better to get overall in his 25 years or 30 years of teaching, the step increase, does it average out to a 2%? So what you're saying is, I do understand that your step may be less than a 2%, but over the career of that teacher, what is better for him? A step or for a COLA?
It's going to depend, Mr. Skinner. So when you look at our pay scales, and that will be one of the benefits of the Evergreen study, when that is finalized, one of the things we're looking to do is to move forward to unified pay scales. So if you look at, again, step 0 to 13, that's less than 2.5. If you go from step 14 to step 37, a step is 2.5 for teachers. But if you look at all steps across the pay scales, 121 of them, an average step is 1.5%. Over the last three or four years, we've been able to give more than that.
If I could just provide this board with, again, similar to Dr. Trampy earlier, just in the context of the years that led up to our providing the first step increase in quite a while, which I was, I believe was 2015. We did a step and a 1% that year across the board. The cost to do that is almost the exact same amount of money as a 3% cost of living adjustment. And I know that, I don't have to share with this board, that when you read in the paper that the state is providing a 2% pay increase for teachers, that that's not a 2% pay increase for anybody, in terms of the funding that actually comes to us. It's a very small portion that we put towards that. So after we did that, again, the feedback, and our teachers and our staff were extremely gracious, I heard nothing but appreciation, but the reality was that those that were at the early part of the scale that Ms. Gaines was referring to, had waited maybe five or six or seven years since starting to work for a step increase, only to realize a 0.5% increase in their pay, plus the 1%. So the next year, instead of doing the step, we did a 3% pay increase, but we did adjust the steps. And we adjust the steps each year so that there's at least an increase in the value. As we looked into last year, we initially proposed a step and a 1% again. But there just, right now, is not, and that's one of the things that we're working with Evergreen on in a solution, is how can we have some solvency to that scale? Because up until the great, I know people don't like that word, maybe not the Great Recession, the recession, the significant recession, there was an expectation that every year, if you got your meritorious step increase, once that was no longer funded, we have, we each year are waiting to see whether we can fund it. And in terms of moving forward, we want to make sure that we don't have, as much as possible, because it's a service profession, people are putting in as much hard work every year as they did the year before, that we don't have a winners and losers scenario. So we've tried to make sure that it's the same across the board so that regardless of where you are on the step scale, that you're given that reward. We would like to be able to find a way to make the teacher step scale at least, you know, solvent in terms of moving forward. But a lot of that will still depend on funding. And we're also hopeful that many of the other scales that we have can perhaps be consolidated to help simplify how we move forward in the future. But I just wanted to provide that in terms of the history.
So, is the green, the study that you're doing, is it going to come up and tell us what the combination may be? Or is it going to say one or the other? Is it going to say that steps are the best way to go? Or is it the best way to go is just give raises each year to certain levels, or, you know?
I think there's two, there's two portions, and we don't have, you know, the final study. I think, as you all received, there's an analysis section for the board's consideration. And then, there are solutions for how to provide greater equity across the scales, looking at that analysis. And what I believe the focus is, is primarily looking at our teacher scale to make sure that the steps are fairly even from step 0 all the way to the end. Right now, there's a big difference between the earlier to the mid-steps and then the mid-steps on, which was a decision, certainly, I think, to reward longevity. But as we are sort of in the year-to-year state, we believe that that might be something to consider as far as the future. So I think there, again, it's not finalized, I don't even want to speculate because that could change, but it could be a consideration of primarily keeping the step schedule for the one employee group, which are teachers, and perhaps looking at something different for the many other types of employees that we serve in the school division. But, again, that's getting ahead of really seeing all of that.
I'd just like to say that I think if I was working as a teacher, I would want to know what I could expect to retire at the end of 30 years. Okay? And if I didn't think I could get there, then I would pack up and I would move to a county or a location that has something consistently that I know that I've worked here, I'm going to retire at this. And right now, I don't know if we have that in this county.
I would suggest that, I don't know, and I don't want to presume to know everything about the 132 school divisions in the state of Virginia, but I don't know of any one of them that isn't going through the same thing. In terms of just having a challenge in providing annual pay increases and really sticking to their pay schedules. They're trying to work it out in their own way locally and with the funding that they're receiving from the state. But I do believe that we offer, you know, as you know, all of our teachers have the access to a benefit specialist, to folks that can work with them to make sure that they get real accurate, you know, projections in terms of what they can expect when they retire. And our goal right now, generally, is to just try to provide as much support in increasing the pay each year as we can.
Any other comments from the board? Mr. Jakubowski.
Thank you. It's not on this topic specifically, but one of the things I had overlooked that I would like to propose to my board and the school board, is we talk every year about joint services that we can do to save money. I'm sorry. And one of the things that I wanted to see if we could do is put together, maybe one from our board, one from your board, and come up with those areas that we, because as we find out, we do do a lot together, and we do save a lot of money that way. And perhaps we need to let the public know, and that would save a lot of questions and time. But then, also to find out what other school divisions do, if they like working together, if they don't, how they would do it better, and, you know, learn from them, and see if there's a way that we can actually save money. Because sometimes you can join forces and it actually costs more. And before we just, you know, get together and do that, we should at least see what else has been done. And I'm sorry if I'm skipping ahead, but that was on my notes too. And just to make sure, because we talk about it every year, and we never seem to actually do anything. So I think if we had a board member from each, we would actually, you know, at least get the report back, and then we can start the discussion of what we want to do.
Any other comments from our board?
I have a couple, you asked a couple things, and so, could we add the VRS to the baseline? I think this board could do that, we could all say that, but we couldn't, if we're politicians, we could go along that, but that cannot be permanent. You know, four years from now, you could have a completely different board here. I think it's important for this board to know what's coming up. If you have forecasts for VRS for the next five years, I think that'd be great to bring to our budget committees, if you even have that, or it's two years, or whatever it might be. That would be helpful, but as far as committing to it, we'd be misleading anybody here to say we could commit to that year after year after year because we're not going to be here. And we can't obligate a future board for a decision that we make. With the pay raise, it's something, I'm going to pick on our own Parks and Rec. We know what our turnover rate in our Parks and Rec is, it's 1% per year. So, not that, I know I'm looking out there to see if our Parks and Rec people know, or they're not out there. So, they'll get me tomorrow. So I do think it depends on what our retention is. We need to look at those, we need to look at other factors. Is there any way, I see the Evergreen study's not out until mid-April, it's kind of after our budget season, is there a way to get a draft copy? I believe we got a draft copy, did we not, Mark, of our side of the Evergreen study, or did we not?
We do, and we also have among the, when you're talking about attrition rates in the with the Parks and Rec comment, the schools did provide, and it was sent, distributed to the board, data, historical data on their attrition rate, and also on their salaries in comparison to others in the region.
I saw that.
So there are several data points.
But is there more of a draft that's available, or could be available before the 15th or mid-April?
If the, I can only say that if there's a draft that's available before the school board meets, if we feel like it's really in final form before the formal presentation, if the school board is comfortable with it being released, I think that we could certainly consider that.
Okay.
You know, because right now, we were just tying it that we did not believe it was going to be finalized by the 13th.
Sure.
But if it is finalized, you know, well before the meeting in April, it would be something that the school board, as long as they could view it, I think, first. And then we could certainly provide a draft. But again, going back to the attrition data, I don't know that that is real heavy in there. There is some qualitative feedback, as in yours, from focus groups in terms of the working environment and climate, but I don't believe, I think what we provided is probably more in line with the attrition rates.
Okay. Last comment I have, and I'm not trying to be, not pick on anybody, but it's more of a confusing thing to me, and that's the difference. We just talked about a COLA and a step increase. And Dr. Meyer, when you said it, a COLA is not a raise, and yet we found out tonight that in many cases, it's more than a step increase. So it's more of how we talk about things, and I don't know how you define this, because clearly a 2% or 3% COLA is probably for those new teachers, more of a pay raise than a four or five-step increase, it sounds like. And yet we call that a pay raise. or five step increase, it sounds like. And yet we call that a pay raise, but a COLA not. So it's just more of something, if we could work on in the future, how we determine what is what. Because I, every year I'm going to hear, I got a 3% COLA, but that wasn't a pay raise. It was just a cost of living. And yet, that would be maybe a four or five step increase for some, for some teachers at the lower end of the scale.
It'd be 1.5 per year. So five steps would be 9.5, right?
Did you say it was a half a percent at some? Some are a half a percent? So a half a percent would be a four or five, it'd be, you know?
But just be one difference.
That'd be?
Would be a half a percent. Then the next year would be one and a half, or the next year would be one and a quarter.
Okay, so a two or three step.
And I don't, and maybe folks that certainly were here prior to me, I know that rare, it was rare to even, for a board prior to the recession, I think, to just do a step in isolation. It was usually coupled with an additional cost of living adjustment to go with it. And sometimes it was one, maybe it was two.
All right. You have anything else?
One item, just to add. In regards to the VRS, what we're asking for is not for you to commit future boards, but to look at the FY '18 budget. When you look at the VRS increase, it is 11.3% for Spotsylvania County. That means 2.3 million. We are getting 900,000 from the state. So we are asking for you to fund the 1.4 while you're currently on the board.
All right. Thank you for clarifying that. Anything else?
On that section, I just wanted to go to our four on the agenda. And that, Mr. Blain would like to speak.
Got a number of things that I'd like to speak, some of which we've covered, and some that we're just looking, we're just talking about salary trends. And one of the problems we're having, very frankly, is that there are not enough young people going into education. And they're not going into education. One reason is salaries, I think. And there's an interesting observation I happened to pick up the other day, that of the average weekly income of all workers today is $1,034. The average income of all college graduates is $1,400 a week. Teachers, all of whom are college educated, often with higher degrees than a bachelor's degree, their salaries are about $400 less than the average college graduate. So teachers need good salaries if we're even going to attract people to get into the, into the business. And that's one of our challenges when we're hiring. Our market is all over the country. We have to look all over to find teachers for specific kinds of things. I want to go back to other for just a minute. The discussion of salaries and these things that we've been talking about are really crucial. But I wanted to go back to some of the comments that Chris made and Gary as well. In terms of background, public schools are a vital building block in our democracy. And public schools are funded by the society. And whether you have kids or don't have kids or never had kids, you still pay because our society depends on educated people. And that's legitimate, and that's where we're at. We lose children sometimes to a private school, maybe charter school someday. And one of the threats to public education is if those public funds literally follow students from the private, from the public environment and go and fund, for example, a private school, which the taxes were not designed to fund private schools, there's a potential threat coming down. And I'm, that's a major concern that I have. But when it comes right down to how much money we're spending, it comes down to values. I'd just like to have you think of for just a minute. About 90% of our residents are high school trained, pretty high. State is just a little lower than that. And about 30% of our population have bachelor's degrees or more, they're educated. And this population has one vital interest, and they want a good public education. And I have more people talking to me about why we are not doing a better job financially, educationally, than the people who say, how come you're asking for so much money? And people recognize that if you're going to educate children, you got to have, have some money to do so. The average median income in Virginia today is $65,000 per family. Spotsylvania is $78,000 per family. We're higher than the state average. In Spotsylvania, we spend $1,144, $49 per year per student. You know what the state average is? 1,523. We're about $1,400 lower than the state average today. And yet, in these other categories, we're doing very well or better than the state average. And if you were to, if we were to come to you and say, well, why don't you just make us average, you'd be giving us every, every year, $32,600, $36, $32,600 per year more than our budget is currently asking for. The need is there. We have, right now, we have 316 classrooms in kindergarten, first, second, and third grade. And this is the very foundation of this education. And we have nursery school, and we have Head Start and so on, that I'm not going to talk about at all. But when we're dealing with these young people, when a child needs help, you got to have somebody there to help them. And if you don't teach when that teaching moment is there, it may never come back, or more difficult later. And our principals tell me that probably 50% of the boys and girls that are enrolling in kindergarten in Spotsylvania every year have never had a book in their hand. That alone been the library or anything. Now, these kids are two years behind right off the bat. And we have specialists, we have math specialists and reading specialists. We have, in fact, we have six math specialists and 32 reading specialists that work with those 316 classrooms, plus actually more because they also deal with the fifth and fourth and fifth grade in those classrooms. We could come to you on almost any year and say, our needs far exceed what we're asking for. It's there. And the dilemma is though, you mentioned having to, Chris, where you, there's a deferred payment that we have to pay somewhere down the line, and we'll do it sometime. But you know, when you have a first grader or a second grader, and you don't help them, you may never be able to. And when kids finish third grade, if they don't know, if they're not reading at the third grade level, they're got, they're got problems coming. And so I'm suggesting that our problem, I think anyway, is we could put a lot more effort into what we do. And the population that live in Spotsylvania will back us up. They're willing to spend money on education. And they're looking and they're seeing that this is a very well-run school district. This is a challenge for us, and I recognize that. But I want to, I think, the value is, we've offered the things and we do the things that we are, consider valuable. And so I just felt it's, it's time for us to put into context what all of the business about money is and salaries and that's all nuts and bolts and absolutely critical, I know that. But the fundamental question remains, what is it to us? What values do we have in our children, in our educational system for those kids? I just wanted to add that. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, we just wanted to bring some, just new committee ideas, proposals to you guys to consider. Just in an effort to do more things together jointly, you know, we suggested that getting the strategic plans to align. We suggested before to get together on at least some of points of our legislative agenda. We think that's a good thing. If you read in the paper today, there was some mention of a joint CIP even in Fredericksburg. That would be something at least to look in, or Stafford, to look into. There are just some things that I think we could encourage our boards to work more closely together and get things more in line. In an effort to start that process, we're willing to, just hope you guys would entertain a joint committee on shared revenue agreements that we've just been discussing. Maybe one member from your board and a member from our board can get together and do a cost-benefit analysis and do some research and just present it to the board, just so we have some information on it. And we also like to do a joint committee on procurement and shared services, since it comes up every year. We gave you a slide on what we already do. But there are some other things that we could do. But I think if we did, one of your board members and one of our board members do some research, do a cost-benefit analysis. And if they find that there isn't a benefit, then we can just stop bringing that up every year. Or if they find there is a benefit, we can get a third-party person to do a presentation, show us where the savings will be, and then we can go forward with that. Instead of just keep bringing it up every year and sweeping it under the table, why don't we actually research it, find out the information on it, and then we've addressed it, taken care of it, and we either move forward with it, or we move it off the table, just so we don't have to readdress things that we talk about every year. So those would be the first two steps that we would like, just to get more on the same page. So there's not months and months of questions back and forth. And every year, there are a lot of the duplicate questions. But I think if we're working together more and we're talking to our counterparts more often, then maybe this could be a more efficient process. So if you guys would consider those committees with us, we have people that have already volunteered for our side. So if you guys can talk about that, that we would appreciate that. Lastly, we just want to discuss options for closing the school's budget gap and meeting future financial needs. I want to hear your thoughts on allocating more recurring general fund monies to support the school system. Consider establishing a reserve account on the county's books for schools. So like we already discussed, our health insurance reserve is depleting. Your health insurance reserve is very robust, because you guys maybe consider starting a reserve for the schools. So if we needed to have health insurance increases one year and they went above where we planned, we at least have a reserve fund. Or consider splitting county revenues in excess of the budget at the end of each fiscal year with the schools. So you have carryover every year. Consider giving us a percentage of that, maybe 10%, maybe 15%. Just consider if you're, every year, one-time funding comes up. That would be a source of one-time funding. We don't love one-time funding, but if that's the only thing that's left over, could we be guaranteed a percentage of that? Just some sort of effort to show that you're supporting the schools. We just want to hear some thoughts on that.
Any comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, before we go, I do want to ask, it does not have on anything that you've just commented on. That's something that I would rather think on before we comment tonight. But I do have one issue that I would like to present to this school board to think about in the future. One of the things that we know we have overcrowding in our schools, especially Mass Aponics High School is one. You're doing Cortland. I believe you're adding maybe builds like we did at Mass Aponics. I'd like you to take this under consideration. To build a new high school is, as we know, probably $70 million, pretty close to that. So here's something to think about, please, and probably more now, okay? But here's something that we have. If we were to think about possibly building a, let's take an elementary school size, we build them to what, 800 students, okay? And let's just use Mass Aponics for an instance. We have about, we have a freshman, I guess freshman enrollment is about 600 at Mass Aponics per year, some close, some close to that. Yeah, it probably varies and everything. But we're saying, if you were to build or add on to, let's say, Mass Aponics or Riverbend, whatever you do, consider this. You'd have a separate school for just ninth graders, and that'd do two purposes. Number one, it would free up the high school itself for the increasing population that may be coming of six to 800 seats, depending on what we have. Okay? The other thing is, a ninth grader is actually, I'm going to say, mature enough to be in with seniors, juniors, and sophomores. When I grew up, we had seventh, eighth, and ninth grade was our middle school, and then we went into high school at 10th grade. And we found that was much more easier to do that. And it would only cost, instead of building a whole, a brand-new high school of $70 million, we might think of an elementary school at $24 million, 20, 27, about, let's say, a third of the cost, a third of the cost to do that. And yet, what you've got is, now you have, you have that, that capacity in the high school, you have the capacity, and you'd still be under a principal. Maybe running the ninth grade would be an assistant principal, not assistant principal, associate principal, something of that nature. And then that way, you would be able to, we would save the county money when it does come time, because I don't think, as we see, we don't have high schools planned right now in the future. And I don't want to do that because it's $70 million or maybe even more by the time we really need it. And if we could budget in the future for maybe that $27 million to offset what's in the crowdedness of the schools and the high schools right now. So I hope you understand what I'm getting drift to. Have a separate ninth grade, because really, the new class coming would fill between six to 800. You'd have, you'd build it to 800, but that'd give you the room for new. Plus, you're opening up the rooms for this new growth in the high schools as they move on and stuff of this nature. So it's just one of those ideas I was thinking about. And please take that under consideration for future, because right now, we know, I even believe it's Riverbend at capacity, pretty close to it. They, we built that for 2,000 students. Is that right? Or is that a little bit, is that correct? Riverbend was built at 2,000. And I know Mass Aponics, we added rooms, we built it to bring it up to 2,000. Yeah, exactly. So we're overcrowded. So what I'm saying there is that would allow us to free up that room, maybe keep our ninth graders, you know, and I'm not saying it's anything wrong, but maybe they're just not quite ready for that, the activity that happens in high schools. They would be a little bit more mature in 10th grade. As, I'm sure you're going to mature as you go on. But that would save a county money, quite a little bit of money in the future. So I ask you to just consider that in the future when you think about when we might need it and what we can do to obviously help the crowdedness in our high schools out here. Okay? So that, just an idea. Pass it on to you, and please, if the board would consider that. Be interested in what you think of it. Thank you.
Dr. Trampy?
Just wanted to comment briefly on the, on the number five options. Number one, allocating more recurring general fund monies to support the school system. That's kind of what we've been talking about all night. I certainly want to do that. And I think we can. So allocate more. Question is how much more? So we'll work on that. Number three is an intriguing idea. Whenever we have monies left over, I generally propose something to do, something, some use of those funds. And my suggestions never seem to happen, so I'm certainly open to sharing them with the schools. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, a couple of quick ones, you know, as you pointed out. Sean, you said that you anticipate VRS rates to, the increase to go down over the next several years?
Let me clarify that, Mr. McLaughlin. When you look at VRS, there are two main components that you have to consider. Number one are the contributions that are paid into the fund, but also the investment market. I, neither you can predict what that will look like. But what I've been told is that because our increases, our increase is so high this year, because they're funding VRS one year in advance. So yes, there is an expectation that for the next two bienniums, that we will not see a double-digit increase. But that's predicated upon the market.
So I'm kind of getting, if you anticipate it potentially being lower next year, the contribution rate, could that be a one-time fund this year?
No, because what happens is, it's now built into your baseline budget. And let's say next year, there's no increase. You still have to pay the baseline contribution. However, that's a good idea as it pertains to health insurance. Because we have begun to develop a five-year strategic plan. We have made some proposals to our school board looking forward. And yes, we could use one-time funds for a health insurance payment.
So just for, maybe you can take a look at that, because I'm, you know, I was against our budget stability fund last year. So we have a fund out there, potentially it could be your health, if we could eliminate the health increase insurance or your rate increase by applying our budget stability reserve as the reserve for you. Just something to look at. And again, the VRS, though, but if we anticipate it potentially going down by a percent over the next two years, maybe we take the risk and fund it with one-time money this year and next year to eliminate that, with those two options. So if we could just look at that and maybe anticipate with those, if, if the rate of increase is lower next year, then maybe we don't need to pay as much, so.
No, we're not anticipating that VRS will go down. We're anticipating that we will not see double-digit increases. However, on not see double-digit increases, however, on the health insurance.
So, let me ask first, because you said earlier that this is the last year of our large increases, you know, because I see back in '11, it was a 9.5, 3%. So are we still going to concede a 20% next year or 22%? This year, I guess you're anticipating 22.55%. Are we expecting something greater than that next year or equal to?
At a minimum, it would stay at the 22.5.
So why is it not receding, I guess?
It does not, because you have obligations.
So I thought we were paying higher now because we were trying to catch up for the years that we did not fully fund it.
But the expectation is that next year, hopefully, there will be no increase, not that it will go down. You don't anticipate, it's never gone down. I've been here for 12 years now, I've never seen it go down.
Closing comments from us? Mr. Braswell?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I want to thank the gentlemen from the Board of Supervisors. I recognize the tough work that you guys have ahead of you, and this school board member appreciates the effort that you're going to dedicate to the schools and making sure that our citizens of Spotsylvania County are having the best possible schools that we can have. So I just want to start off by saying that. I want to make sure that we all, like we did last year, I remember having a conversation with the chairman, Mr. McLaughlin, and I think one of the things that were very valuable in last year's discussions is that we actually talked to one another, talked to each other with dignity and respect, and I think we need to continue on that trajectory where we don't get caught up in hyperbole and the issues of taking the best intentions of each board out of context. So I just want to just start off from, as this school board member, indicating that what we're engaged in is a very serious business, it affects all of our citizens, and we want to all do the very best that we can for them. So I thank you for that. I want to let you know that this school board is very serious about doing the very best we can to meet you halfway. We rolled up our sleeves, we really engaged heavily in the issues of the health insurance, we had to make some really tough decisions, and we came about it in a very professional way, where we made some tough decisions and cut our budget deficit so that we felt that we did our due diligence when we came to you, we could look you in the eye and say that we did our part. And I just want you to know that this board was very serious in meeting you halfway. We also, Mr. Skinner brought up an idea in the future, and I wanted to comment on it. He was talking about the growth in the area and the needs for schools, something that I've always talked about all along, and this is segue, it gives me an opportunity to do it. I mean, you already know that we're considering renovation of Cortland High School to increase capacity there. But something I often believed is that, and maybe, you know, growth may determine that we have a need for another high school, but I actually believe that we could spend that money more effectively in a better career and tech center and take advantage of the space that's already there, with Cortland High School expanding or encapsulating that current CTE, and building a career and tech center that is not only innovative, but is beneficial to the county in terms of attracting employers to the area, because they're getting students that are being trained with, in a state-of-the-art career and tech center. So that's just an idea based off of something that you brought up that I've always often thought of. And as far as the joint services, I really think it's a great idea. I know Mr. McLaughlin and I talked about it quite a bit last year, and I think the key to that is always that what's mutually beneficial. I mean, joint services, to have joint services that are not mutually beneficial are a waste of effort by both sides, and there's no tangible gain. But if we see that there's some areas like our maintenance where we have some joint and it's mutually beneficial, then that's stuff that we need to really engage in and look for ways to be a benefit to our citizens. So I would just add that caveat that I'm sure there's some areas that our chairman just mentioned that could be mutually beneficial, and there's some other areas, if we put our heads together, where they're mutually beneficial, that we could glean some benefit from that. And finally, I just want to clarify something. I sat and I listened to a presentation about football helmets, and I just, I'm sorry, I have to get this off my chest, but I want to make sure I protect the football coaches and the athletic director of Cortland High School, who I'm very close with, and I happen to be a football coach at Cortland High School, I know exactly what they're doing. But it's called the National Operating Committee on the Standards of Athletic Equipment. All helmets every year have to be inspected, so when the season is over with, which usually gets over at, in around November timeframe, and if a school goes to the playoffs, they play in December. But in January, those helmets are taken every year, and they're required to be taken every year to be inspected. Every helmet, every single year, has to be not only inspected, but reconditioned, and then they receive that seal of approval. Now, every 10 years, the helmets have to be replaced, no matter what, no matter what condition they're in, if that helmet's 10 years old, it has to be replaced. And one of the things that Cortland High School does is, they start to purchase the helmets in small numbers so that they don't have to make a large expenditure all at once. And they do it in January because that's the time when you get the best rate for the helmet. And I just felt like I had to say that in open form, because not only did I believe that some bad information got out to the public, but information that was injurious to good coaches that are looking out for the best interest of our students and making sure that they have helmets that not only fit properly, helmets that protect for concussion and neck injuries, and they do a very good job of it. So I just wanted to share that with this group to make sure that the information that was put out, in my opinion, that was erroneous, was corrected for the record. And with that, I have no other comments.
And it's fiscally responsible. Mr. Twigg?
Thank you. I too appreciate your time and energy and the meeting, and as we consider these budgetary related issues. On the grassroots level, our board concurred that about $600,000 of added service is valuable, i.e. cafeteria monitors for our lower schools, expansion of our REACH program, facilities, lowering our activity fee to $50 from $75, increasing our substitute pay rate by $5, and of course, enhancing activity bus program. All of those items, I am staunchly supporting, and I hope and expect that we'll be able to push these into our budget this year. We'll do our best to make that happen, and we do appreciate any consideration each of you can make toward that end. And with that, again, appreciate your time and thank you.
Mr. Blaine, you have more?
I have just a couple of suggestions. One, the suggestion that you've made earlier, Mr. Graham, about the committee to look at some sort of planned percentage type of program, I think is a good idea. I'd like to see that happen. And as I understand, our budget surplus annually, when there is one, you often, some of those funds are put into non-obligated or designated types of things, accounts that you use that money for, rather than put it right into the general fund, and later on, the county's able to come back and use those funds for special kinds of projects and so on. I think you've done that this year, and you went back, or did you, I think, made a correction to last year's budget, in fact, with some of that type of money. And I'm suggesting that maybe, just as you put some surplus funds in there for use of the county, a significant amount should be put into one of those funds specifically for the schools to use as backup. We don't have that type of thing very often, and I think some reasonable percentage of what happens, we're running 49% of the general fund, 48% this year, we used to get 50 and 60%, as you know, so we're way down, and having a little backup might be, I'm sure it would be helpful for us, and if that's possible, I'd like to have you think about it. And I was going to suggest, and I think Mr. Taylor's already doing this now, but that as you put your budget together annually for us, that you work in, and I'm repeating an earlier statement, salary consideration, so that that appears right off the bat. You know you're going to plan on having such a thing, is what I'm suggesting there. And finally, I hope that on the 14th, when you have your decision-making to get the advertised rate, that whatever number you use, make it enough so that if you need additional monies to meet our budget request, there would be adequate amount in that advertised tax rate. And the reason I say that is, on the 28th, a couple of weeks later, you have a public hearing, and you want people to comment on your budget. And it doesn't make sense to me if you, if you cut that off, if you have a lot of people come in and say, "Look, we're all for the schools, we want you to maximize what you can give to them," and you say, "Well, I'm sorry, we've already decided we're not going to do that." You're kind of unintentionally sliding the people that came out to spend some time giving your advice. You still have the option on the, when you do actually make the decision, you still have, you still go up to that tax level. That's just a suggestion. Thank you.
Ms. Shelley?
Once again, thank you again for having us here this evening. I just wanted to touch on something that was in the budget, and just because I have heard other people state different numbers for what our, what portion of the county's budget Spotsylvania schools actually gets. In different places on, in the budget, there's different percentages, and on page 31, it makes it look like the school is getting an additional almost $3.6 million, but that's not reality. That's our grand total from our federal, state, and local money. So this number makes it look like the county is giving us an additional $3.5 million. And then on page 32, and this is the budget at a glance from your budget book, and then on page 32, there is a picture of a dollar bill, and it shows that the school transfer is 53.4% of the county's budget. But yet, on page 15 of the budget book, it says the local transfer to schools increase of 286,320 to match the net new debt service, and for the grand total, it's 48% of the general fund revenue. So I just want to clarify that the schools are getting, and it's actually, that's rounded up, it's a little under 48% of the county's budget. So the other numbers that have been stated and throughout, I know, and it's different pots of money altogether, but the actual operating budget is just under 48% of the general fund revenue. And then I do want to, last year, I read a poem and about our teacher, about teachers, and this year, I'm going to read something about educators. And I am borrowing it from someone I do not know, but her name is Lily Garcia. Educators serve hot meals, they put Band-Aids on boo-boos, they diversify the curriculum and instruction to meet the personal needs of all students, the blind, hearing impaired, physically challenged, and the gifted and talented. They make sure students have had their immunizations, they make sure students understand disease control. Educators teach students to resist alcohol, drugs, and tobacco, they give mental health counseling and career counseling, they get students off the bus safely and then get them back on the bus safely, they provide computer education and physical education. Educators teach students not to bully and to say "I'm sorry" and mean it. They instill an understanding of civil rights, the political process, the United States Constitution, and the challenges of racism. They foster social tolerance and an appreciation of cultural and religious diversity. They teach the principles of free enterprise and how to be a good sport. Educators help students to develop personal responsibility, practice bicycle safety, and they check for head lice. Educators provide bilingual education, teach how to be a wise consumer, exercise, weight control, and how to drive a car. They teach the impact of wars, how to develop collaborative skills, how to tune a violin, and how to use reason and evidence to predict the future. They teach students how to manage money and how to revere their environment, how to access information, how to make wise choices, and how to balance a checkbook. They teach loyalty to the ideals of democracy and build patriotism. They teach good oral hygiene and respect the worth and dignity of every individual. They nurture curiosity, encourage good questions, build self-esteem, and they teach reading, writing, and arithmetic. So once again, thank you so much for having us here this evening.
Dr. Meyer?
It's kind of hard to surpass those words of my colleagues on the board. I think I just want to summarize in saying, you know, why we're here this evening, we know we have a gap, we reduced it from 6.5 to 4.5, but we have a gap. It's built in by the way the funding comes to us, that we have no other recourse but to come before you and say, yes, we do need this basic support for the three areas that we've identified, our health insurance, our VRS, and call it what you want, the COLA, but that funding for our employees, so that we can retain them and acknowledge their worth. If we can't give any kind of an increase to our employees, then the burden that we're putting on them for the health insurance increase will put them further behind. And we value the importance of all of our employees, we know we have areas that we're working on through the compensation study. I've been through any, through any number of them, and I do recognize, I do know some of the history of why some of the situations came about, you know, the dilemmas that we're going to have with those that are locked into career steps, and why there's so many mini-steps. It all came about because of state mandate, folks. We were required in those days to give a salary increase, and Gary Skinner remembers full well when we went through those, and why we elected to have career steps, it's come back to bite us. We recognize that, all the more reason why we need to do the compensation study and to look for a solution, but we should find a solution jointly. It should be a joint effort to find a solution there. But we do have, you know, base, three basic areas that we do need your help with this evening, and that's the reason we come to you, the health insurance, the VRS, and our employees. So with that, I'm going to pass. Thank you for allowing us to be here this evening.
Mrs. Blaylock?
Thank you, and thank you for having us, and it's always good to sit across from you and talk about our challenges, and you share your challenges, and we're very aware that there's a lot more than the schools that you are dealing with, and I respect that. Sometimes I really don't even enjoy my conversation because I get told I'm a little too direct. I wish I could sugarcoat this a little bit more, but it's going to be what it's going to be. I listen to all the conversation, I agree with a lot of Mrs. Graham's suggestions, I think a revenue sharing program would be good. Mr. Jakobowski, I heard you, but honestly, it's really your own colleagues you would be saying that to. There's not a lot we can do because we have no taxation authority. I'm certainly not sitting here advocating that we should have it or shouldn't have it, I'm just saying, really, all we can do as school board members is come in and ask you to fund the public schools. I also ask you to be a public school advocate. I have a little boy that's nine years old, and his name is Jackson, I call him Action Jackson because he never quits moving, and he always wants me to take him to movies like the Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles, which I really don't enjoy, and I always say, I'm taking one for the team. And I don't really want to go, but after I go, I see the benefit and how much we have fun, and it's a good thing, and I... And I, sometimes, even if you don't advocate for public schools, and maybe that's not where you educate your child, if you could just see the benefits that our kids are getting in these public schools, even if it's not your choice, the English learner that walks to that door, the child who with a disability, the autistic child, the advanced child, the one that's in the middle of the road that falls through the cracks, if we could just all look at them and realize that that's who our community is. I've heard, been said this many times, I hope this doesn't offend any grown-up here, but I like the kids sometimes better than the adults because they're never mean to me, never. They're so nice. And one time, and this is a true story, I was touring Harrison Road Elementary, and it was a third grade class, and I asked this little girl, I said, "What do you like best about the third grade?" Because you come up with things like, "What's your pet?" and stuff, because you want to make sure that you stay on their level. And she said, I said, "No." I said, "What's your favorite grade so far, kindergarten, first, or second, third?" She said, "Oh, kindergarten, because everyone's nice to me." It's true. I have third-grade twins, and by that age, you do start feeling a little bit of, "I don't like what you're doing," and they start feeling some things back. Jackson has a twin who is not anywhere near as gifted as he is in math. She's not doing well with her times tables. Her teacher happens to stay after a couple of days a week and helps kids. So when we talk about things, and this is why I'm going to try to be a little bit more sugarcoating, instead of, I don't mind the questions being asked about teachers being able to bring their children with them to be educated in Spotsylvania County if they don't live here. But she's sitting there, and I know she's got kids, but she's making sure Bebe learns her times tables, so she don't get behind before they move on to division. And I want her to be able to bring her children from wherever she lives, and she happens to live in Spotsylvania County. But I have an example of, I know of a husband and wife, married, live in Caroline County because it was more affordable for the housing there. And they give to our students every day. They stay after every day. One of them coaches. And they bring their children. So I want to support not only our teachers in any way we can, we talk about our retention rate, it's things like that, when they can bring their baby with them, and that baby could be five or 18 and a senior. That's their baby. They can be in their same environment during the day, they can be of their learning experience. Those are the things we're trying to give to our teachers because we can't pay them exactly what we all want to. And I'm sure that you all would say the same thing about your county employees, wouldn't you want to pay the sheriffs, the deputies, the firefighters, the county workers more? We all want to pay everybody more. I agree, there's not enough money to go around. So all I'm asking, and this is me trying to be a little bit more sugar-cutting, is I appreciate y'all. I really do, whether you have my same belief system or you don't. I know how much scrutiny you are under, just like we are. When someone walks in and votes for me, they've voted for Mr. Skinner, too. We're in the same, we're certainly not enemies. We're trying to work with you. So all I ask is that if you can support public schools, regardless of your belief, come into our schools. This is my open invitation. There's not a school that wouldn't invite you any day of the week. I'd go with you. I really will. If y'all want to see a program, I'll meet you there, and we'll go through it, and we'll have someone from the school who knows the ins and outs of it. I appreciate the ones that come to our graduations and do visit our programs, and it's okay if you don't. I'm just saying, it is who our community is. It's our children, regardless of where you educate your child. And years ago, the county did a survey, and every year it came back, what's your top priority? Schools and public safety. Schools were always number one. Someone had mentioned earlier, I was in the audience, the speaker said something about if you're buying a home, if you're doing something like that, you look for the schools, and that's true. And I do believe that y'all want to support us. Last year, hands down, I really appreciate everything you all did, and I don't want that to go unnoticed. You all have asked a lot of questions of the school board this year. I actually asked for the number, not because I want to ridicule you, it's 47. Some of them had very comprehensive answers, took pages to answer. We don't mind doing it, glad to do it. But I hope those 47 questions yield some more revenue for us, and it helps you understand why we need the revenue. So tonight is really our only shot. The only thing I kind of disagree with you on, Mr. Jakobowski, I won't beg. Y'all kind of have to fund public schools, but I will ask, please fund us to the best of your ability. Please make sure that we can try to put in those activity buses that we want to start the pilot program. The cafeteria monitors on the elementary level, trust me, don't underestimate the importance of that. Help us get that this year. Please help us reduce the participate-to-play to $50. Anything that, we were not adding any more teachers, we're not adding more staff. We would love to, and you know that, but I'm asking for the things we did ask, to if you could please close that gap for us. That's all I'm asking of you, just close that gap. And if there's any questions or anything we can do for you, we'll be here. And as the vice chair, like I say, open invitation to welcome to the schools. When I first got on the board years ago, that's, I'm not an educator by trade, and at the time, it was, Ms. Linda Whelan was the Battlefield District Representative, and I asked her, being a 33-year teacher, to take me to every single building we had. We went to the Juvenile Detention Center, we went to the John J. Wright Educational Center, we went to every single school, then we went to every program. I'm not saying that to brag on myself, I'm just saying, that's how I understood. That's how I got it. So that's all I'm asking you to do. Come go with us, see what we're doing. If you have questions, ask us. We'll continue to answer them. But I ask you to please fund what we've asked for this year. It's not outrageous, it's something that's very doable. And if you could do that for us, we'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone that knows me, or even has watched me on the board for four years, knows that the way I understand things is through numbers. I'm not one of those words-type people. But I was working on a Sunday evening, and I was driving home about six weeks ago, and I heard an ad on the radio that Amazon was opening its first robot-operated grocery store with one employee. Everything else is robots, stacking, bagging, checking out. And it wasn't numbers, and somehow it clicked in my head. I actually had to call our superintendent on a Sunday evening because it applied 100% to our budget. And if that, that's what huge companies are doing. We know that. Fast food's moving away from people. Now grocery stores are moving away from people. In order, in an effort to save money, business is moving away from people. That's not something we can do in schools. We are a service-based industry. We are dependent on people. We are dependent on teachers. Some of our teachers are the only human interaction that a child sees during the day. Their parents are working, they interact with a tablet, and the only human interaction they have is from their teacher. So we are a service-based industry, and our teachers don't make tips like other servers. So as far as our COLA goes, we have to value them, and we have to stay competitive there, and that's why we add that. And on that same point, we have an increasing demand in education. Education's changing. That same story showed us that there's a demand for robot design. I mean, there's an increase in jobs, in technology places that we can't imagine, because they weren't like that when we were that age. The children that we're educating now need to be able to work on those robots, design those robots. And we have an extracurricular program at Post Oak Middle School that's a robotics team challenge. They compete in other places. They design and they build, and they win awards, and the teacher does it without a stipend, and because she is committed. And this is where education is going. It is moving in new directions, and we have to keep up. And in order to keep up, we have to invest in our people. Our people are the ones that are trained in how to get us there. So speaking to that, that definitely helps us put it all together. It makes the numbers make sense. Our gap is all related to our staff. It's related to our people that we have to employ to interact with these kids, to teach these kids, to meet the changing environment, to build the robots, to design the robots, so we can all check out with robots and never see people smile again. I mean, that's just where the future's going, and we have, we have to stay there. We have to keep moving. So to get us to the numbers, 91% of the schools last year stayed on the state recommendation and gave the COLA. We did. As you know, already this year, the counties that we called to confirm that they are giving it is Arlington, Stafford, Chesterfield, Prince William, Hanover, Fredericksburg, Caroline, Fairfax, Roanoke, Arlington, and they're just confirmed today. So I mean, it's, we're just staying in line with the market. The free market drives wages. That's all we're doing, is staying with the state market. We're not giving above what the state recommends. That's all our COLA is. So we are asking for you to fund our bills. That's it. There's no needs, there's no wants, I mean, no extra needs, no extra wants. All the really cool additions with lower price tags, we funded already. They are fully funded. They are in this budget, no matter what you give us, because we've had grant money, reallocation of other funding from other sources. It's not local funding that go to those programs. We get the cafeteria aides no matter what. We get the activity bus pilot no matter what. That is all funded, that's all done. The only thing that is not funded yet is the portion of the COLA, the portion of the VRS, and the health insurance. So it's $3.6 million for the COLA and the VRS mandate. If you want to do the health insurance with the one-time funding, Ms. McLaughlin, we would greatly appreciate that. Then we only need $3.6 million. And that is a wonderful compromise. We are perfectly happy with that. I just want to finish saying that, I had to write a Facebook post this weekend, saying the same thing, that all of our county services are needed. That's the definition of public services. We all work together. We need educated people in our society to be kept safe and to be rushed to the hospital when we need it, and we need our planning commission to make sure that we don't have out-of-control communities, and we all work together. So it's not about pinning one division against another division, it's about funding every department's bills first. Every department has bills, so pay the bills first. That's all I'm asking. Pay our bills, and then worry about luxury items second, just as you would do your household budget. So that is my conclusion. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion.
Thank you, gentlemen, for having us this evening. All in favor?
Thank you as well. As long as we're down here, does the board have any other comments for tonight? Do I have a motion to adjourn? The ayes?
Aye.
Any ayes? All right. Thank you.[1787.72]